Meeting to order. The invocation will be led by the Vice Mayor and the pledge by Mr. Schroeder.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you, Father, in the decisions we make that affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. We thank you for the beautiful, warm weather. Father, we also pray for peace and comfort for Officer Eaton and his family as they grieve the loss of their precious daughter. Father, we ask also for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military, and all of their family members. We ask that they may be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item from, for further discussion, the request must be made prior to approving the consent agenda and be moved to the new business. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
I said second, but I didn't say it loud enough.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay, awards and presentation. Purple Heart Award to Officer Brian Bugby. Chief Kelly.
Uh-oh. We have on the agenda certificate of appreciation to Councilwoman Tess Nessar.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Our script reads differently.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Well, you get stuck with me two nights in a row. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, gives me great honor and privilege this evening to present what I think is an understated award for one of your own. For the folks that don't know, Tess has been a volunteer with the county, the city, I don't know how many commissions, I don't know how many different boards over her span of times in government service. And she also served the police department for a period of time as a volunteer. I don't know how the woman has the time to do anything to even show up for the meetings here tonight. I'm sure somewhere there she's volunteering someplace on the side that we don't know about.
Yep.
But what you may not know is she volunteered in the Criminal Investigation Division for a number of years, and she was always a pleasant person to come around. You always tell when Tess is around, because you go back there and you'd hear her, she'll, "Good afternoon, good morning," and it'd be seven, eight o'clock at night. And it's a Tess, "It's seven o'clock at night." Well, it's morning someplace. But she always had a pleasant thing to do, and the task that she took on was pretty much coordinated our, the city's sexual registration program, which is pretty active, and she could probably tell you how active it is. We won't only get into the dirty details of it all, but it's quite, quite the task. It's not just a matter of filing things away and being a file clerk. It's researching the information that were given from the county, checking back with the county, make sure the information they gave us was correct, and checking the information back at the state where the person may have come from or the jurisdiction it came was correct, and then gathering all those documents to put it together in a form that we could put in, or so when we do our audits, that the officers could go out and actually do what I call a safe, public safety check on the individuals we have registered in our community. And then, once a year, maybe twice a year, the U.S. Marshal Service, their task force would help us through a grant, and we would get their officers and our detectives to work together and meet with each one of these individuals and corroborate everything that she put on the piece of paper was accurate. And if it wasn't, it would go back to her again, and then she would have to read, update. So I just wanted, if you can stay where you're at, I'm going to present this little certificate of appreciation, and it's presented to Tess Hesser, council member. The certificate of appreciation is in recognition of your years of dedication to the Apache Junction Police Department, specifically to Criminal Investigations Division. Your services in the arena of the sexual offender registration is and has been unparalleled. It was a disaster before you, by the way.
Wow.
Thank you so very much for your service and our best to your newest challenge as council member for the city of Apache Junction. And Tess, with that, I did attach in here our current challenge coin. I don't know if you got one. It's with the COVID pandemic coin, so you survive not only the PD, but the pandemic, and hopefully you survive.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I just like to say one thing, thank you, but this is a reason why everybody in Apache Junction should volunteer. I had been a volunteer with victim services with the police department when this situation came up. So, under Chief Monahan, we were discussing this problem. We had all these cases that not one of them had ever been worked back in 2010. There was cases to, for the police to ever pick someone up, they had to have court records, they had to have prison records, arrest records from no matter what city or state all over the United States. And not a single case, on average, I don't know, about 150 cases in Apache Junction, not a single one of them had any records. So I started with the first day, and I still, it took me five years to get all of those documents and get all of those cases where they are today. And as, when I left in December, every case in Apache Junction was a complete case. And I, what I'm proud to say is I think we're probably the only police department in the state that had all of their cases complete. No? So, anyway, if you ever want to do something useful for your city, go, go talk to people, go volunteer. We need volunteers to do these kinds of jobs. Thank you.
I hear they're going to just leave them there waiting for you.
Thank you. Okay. Announcements of current events from the mayor and council members. Brayden.
Yeah, so I want to start off, last Monday, a few council members and the mayor attended a meeting here, actually, in this room, from, that was put on by Congressional District Four Congressman Gosar, who represents our area and all kinds of other areas, in regards to the potential closure of the Apache Junction Social Security Office. This is a move that, quite frankly, just makes absolutely no sense whatsoever, and he's really on the forefront of this advocating to keep our office open. So a couple of the things to just highlight on this is, the Social Security Administration is looking at moving the office to downtown Gilbert, about 20 miles away. The next closest office already at this point is in downtown Mesa, about 20 miles away. The new office would be about six miles from the current Mesa downtown, the downtown Mesa office, making it just out of reach for our constituents and our community members. Some of the demographics that we've, that we knew, but he's also emphasized, is about 8.4% of the residents of Gilbert are 62 and older, as opposed to 32.9% of the Apache Junction area. 57.7% of the Gilbert residents have an annual income of $80,000, as opposed to Apache Junction, which is about, compared to 90% of Apache Junction residents fall below that. Gilbert veterans population is roughly about 1.7%, while Apache Junction is about 2.8% just in one zip code, with a total area of about 4%. A couple of the other things that just don't make sense, and you can see the building there, it was built in 2005. In the last three years, about $1.8 million in renovations has gone on in that building, upgrading it, making it more user-friendly, et cetera. So to close, it really just doesn't make sense for this area. So, online, there is a petition that you can go to, you can actually just type in ipetitions.com and search for that petition, or if you're interested in signing it, I do have the paper copy here, just see me after the meeting, and help us advocate and be a voice in Washington to keep that office open. So, the next update is, a lot of you know that last year, we started talking about a flag project, the largest flag in the state of Arizona. We're trying to bring that here to Apache Junction. We have started those conversations, we were on a little bit of a hiatus in the first quarter of the year, but we have started those conversations. We actually met last week, and we're meeting again tomorrow and doing some site walkthroughs. A local construction company and contracting company, as well as electricians and architects and engineers and the whole nine yards, at this point, it really looks like they're going to be donating all of the work and the time and things to get that going, which is really, really awesome. It's looking at an estimated cost of about $80,000 to $100,000. So we're progressing and moving that forward, so we're excited about that and bringing that to fruition here. And then just the last thing is an update on our Founder's Centennial. We're about six months out at this point. The event is going to be January 8th, held up at Prospector Park. So we've been working on this for the last two years now. Actually, earlier this week, Republic Services notified me that they have done a $10,000 sponsorship for that event, so I'd like to publicly thank Republic Services for their continual support of our events here in Apache Junction. But if there's anybody else that wants to help us get that event off the ground, it's going to be an all-day affair. There's going to be music entertainment, the Superstition Horsemen's are doing things. It's a real big community affair that's going to be fun for all ages, there's going to be fireworks at the end, just a really, really great day. But we're starting to meet bimonthly now on the first and third Thursdays of every month at 6:00 p.m. at the Public Library, and we need all the help that we can get to pull this event off, because it's going to be a really great celebration to commemorate Apache Junction being around for 100 years, so, thank you.
Gail. Nope. Robert.
No.
Kelly.
I do have, Kiwanis is, actually, it's a global organization that, it's basically about helping children in the community, and the Apache Junction area has had a Kiwanis group, but it's kind of been not real active recently, and they're starting to become more active. So what we want to do is certainly invite the community to join in and get involved with Kiwanis. Our meetings are on the fourth Thursday of the month, so our next meeting is going to actually be next Thursday, the 27th. We're holding them at the Salvation Army. There's a social period of time from 5:30 to 6:00, and the meeting then starts at 6:00. So we welcome you to come and participate and get involved with your community, and let's help these kids in our area, so, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple things from the chamber. First is the Shop Local program. It begins every year on May 1st, it runs from May 1st to October 31st, six months of the year when after, honestly, after a lot of our winter visitors leave, to help our local businesses, what you do is you go down to the chamber and for free, you get a card. Now, they do ask for a dollar donation. That dollar donation goes to the high school scholarship fund. The chamber doesn't charge you anything at all. But anytime you go to any of these businesses that Matt is showing you, you will get a 10% or a 20% or 15% or a special discount, depending on what they have listed here on this sheet. And you can get this sheet also at the Chamber of Commerce or get it on their website. But anytime you shop at any of those places, all you do is show them, show them your card. Like, the first one there is the Ace Hardware, is that the Ace Hardware?
True Value.
True Value, okay. Put on my glasses. Put on, go to True Value, and right off the bat, you get 10%. That's like saving the tax. So definitely go to the chamber and get your Shop Local card. Next, we have, they still have in, in place, this is called Shop Small, small, yeah, Shop Small. This is a program where the chamber used grant money, and they bought a whole bunch of $20 gift cards, and they still have them. People aren't taking advantage of this for months now. All you have to do is go to any of these businesses that are listed, you make a $50 purchase. It doesn't have to be a one-time purchase, it can be a combination of two or three times that total up to $50. You save your receipts, and when you've got $50 at any one of these businesses, you take those receipts to the Chamber of Commerce, and they will let you pick out from one of these businesses a $20 gift card. So the next time you go, $20 of your purchase is free. So take advantage of that program. And then there's, the Chamber of Commerce has an annual golf tournament, it's going to be September 24th at Mountain Brook, and so if you'd like to, if you're a golfer, please register. They, that's how they raise their funds to help operate the chamber. And, is that, wasn't there one more? No? Okay. That's it. I don't have anything there.
Okay. I'm going to retouch based with what Brayden was talking about, the closure of the Social Security Office. It is something that we've already done a resolution and did a letter to our national representatives and senators, and it's something that's, you know, very, for our community, I think is very important. Yes, they're, they're talking about moving it to Gilbert. It's going to be just slightly over five miles from the Mesa facilities, which is over 20 miles from us here. So we don't, have not received good answers as to the reasons why, and I'm just going to basically give an express statement here, is I think, you know, I would like to redo our letter from representing the council, if it's all right, and send it out to, again, to our representatives and senators, and trying to emphasize the fact that this is definitely going to be, you know, hurtful to our community. Okay. City managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. Last week, we received a phone call from a man who had been interacting with our Code Compliance Division, and Victor worked with him and was successful to, to be able to close out a code compliance case with no issues. The man stated that in the past seven months, he's noticed a huge difference in the city, and that it looks much cleaner. I bring this forward as a great example who, of someone in our city who interacted with city staff under a less than desirable circumstance. Yet the situation was able to be turned around, and thanks to our service of our code officers. It's great to hear that our residents are noticing. I credit this to the tireless hard work of our staff. This is exactly the kind of feedback we want to hear, and hope we'll continue to hear this trend moving forward. I also want to report that tomorrow, as a reminder, is Chief Farber's 40-year goodbye at the Multi-Gen Recreational Center at 2:00, and everyone's invited. And I also just wanted to report that today, one of our, and right now, one of our own is hurting, Officer Ernest Eaton's daughter's funeral was today. And if you're not aware, about a week ago, his daughter passed away in a horrible traffic accident. She was just right around that, 20 years old, 19 years old, and, and all of our thoughts, and thank you for your mention in the invocation, Vice Mayor, our thoughts are with Ernest Eaton and his family at this time. And then, lastly, I just wanted to clarify an error that I made last night. At the end of our meeting, we, we were going over the recreational marijuana item, and you asked, like, asked me what was next, and I said there'll be a council direction to staff. I was incorrect. I had forgotten that council had continued that specific item to be, we had already received direction, and so it is on, it had been continued as something that is a public hearing, has to be heard in public on June 1st, and that you'll have that ordinance, and it's draft in front of you, June 1st, there's three items that are alternatives that you can review and consider. So I just want to make sure that was clear, I had said it in public, it was direction to staff, it's not. It's actually a continuance that'll be coming forward, and Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Consideration in the application for a permanent extension of premises for Dirtwater Springs. Let's see, Jennifer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before council this evening is a permanent extension of premises applied for by Dirtwater Springs. They were one of the applicants that shortly after council gave administrative approval to approve the temporary extension of premises. They received theirs on February 8th, so just six days after council had approved that. I actually drove by their facility, they actually have a brand-new fence up with two security gates for the outdoor area, and all of the police department, fire department, planning and building have recommended approval of their temp, of their permanent extension of premises.
Is, well, okay, is there, is discussion among council? As a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the application for a permanent extension of premises for Dirtwater Springs located at 586 Apache Trail be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Nessar.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmell.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay, don't have any old business or new business. Consideration for Resolution Number 21-09 authorizing intergovernment agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for Delaware Drive roadway improvement projects. Raquel.
Good evening. It's nice to see you guys again.
Yes.
Under better circumstances, I promise.
It's always good to see you.
I'm here to discuss a possible intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Transportation for some roadway improvements on Delaware Drive from 16th Avenue to Broadway Avenue. So quick background, we, every two to three years, MAG has projects in which they have the different committees, and that you can go ahead and apply for, for federal funds. In this case, for this project, we submitted three separate applications. And 2019, we were awarded funds from the Active Transportation Committee. We were also awarded funds from the Pinal County, the Transportation Bridge Program. And in 2020, we applied for closeout funds for design, which closeout is the only time that we can apply for design, because no other funding source is, um, fund design. So we were awarded money as well for design. So we've got a design anticipated for, begin 2021, a fall, and the reason for starting design so quick is so that we can make it, so ADOT, we have to do an ADOT project in which it takes anywhere between 18 to 24 months. However, if we can move this project, this design a little quicker, we can have a shovel-ready project, and we can anticipate that there, there could be some overages in construction funds, and then we can also push it to get to, to closeout funds to apply for more funding so that we can get closer to that 5.7% match. As of right now, construction's anticipated to begin 2024, but as I mentioned, if we get design completed sooner than that, we can apply for advance, advancement in construction and get it to 2023. So, as I, as I shown here, we've got like four segments of Delaware. The, the portion in the green, which is 16th Avenue to Broadway Avenue, this is the only section that's two lanes of road. And you're well aware that on the west side of the street, there's a big, big drainage channel. I've seen, when we, when we've done the construction on the, the roadway construction of this project, we actually have an incident of the roller falling in the channel.
Oh, my.
And I'm sure there's other incidents as well, too. So this, this is a safety concern.
Absolutely.
So as it shows right now, we've just got the two 24, the two, the two 12-foot lanes, and we have sidewalk, curb, and gutter on the residential side, which is the east side of the road. Existing conditions, we've got a road that goes, a two-lane road that goes into three lanes, it's not aligned at Broadway, so that, that poses a safety concern. Also, the safety concern is the, the drainage. You've got those three barrel pipes outletting from all those places to the north, from the, that goes all the way through those, the Grant, the Ocatillo, the Main, Apache Trail, it all comes into this Delaware channel here, and that's why you see those three barrels right there. Before, we did a drainage project that goes from Broadway, and it goes down Lothar, 10th Avenue, so this third picture at the top here is the, the outlet, the head, the head wall of where the drainage goes out into. Then you see a picture there with a non-compliant sidewalk ramp, so this project will, will replace all the sidewalk ramps to make them all ADA-approved. The middle bottom picture, you see a car backing out, and it's backing out into the wrong lane. So, I mean, I can go on and on and on. So the improvements that were proposed, that, that we had proposed and we had, we are receiving funds for, I mentioned we submitted for three different grants, the one being the design. But the reason for dividing into the two different, the other two different grants is because CMAC, when we apply for transportation funds, we can only do pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So the top picture there, you see sidewalks, sidewalk ramps, curb and gutter, bicycle lanes. I do show a caveat on there, saying that the drainage is city-funded, and that's only mentioned there because CMAC does not fund drainage. That's where this next grant comes into, into place. So when we applied through the Pinal County Bridge Program, STBGP, well, that one is for road expansions. So we did a center shared turn lane, we did the streetlights and the storm drain. However, STBGP was capped at 1.77 million dollars. So our cost share, we have to use, and we have to use ADOT because the city is not self-certified, and this is per federal guidelines. So there's automatically a $30,000 cost that the city has to pay 100%. The design was $450,000, the city's 5.7% of that is $25,650. So then, when you get down to the construction side of it, you'll see 5.7% and 100% city match. Well, the 5.7% gets us to 162, but as I mentioned, the STBGP program, that was capped at 1.77 million dollars, and the project as shown was more than that. So that's why, that's why it shows there are an additional $381,000, in which if we get the design done quicker than, than what's anticipated, we can go to closeout funds to, to eliminate that $381,000. So that brings your total costs to a, a total project estimated cost at $3.7 million, with the city, city funds only paying close to $600,000 of that. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm just, I'm just surprised we haven't pulled bicycles and cars out of that ditch on a regular basis. It's amazed me all these years that, you know, we've been real lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially further down, we've had some damage done to, we're in the process of fixing them up right now.
Correct.
And all that water's going at a very fast rate.
Yeah. So, so because we are, we, we did receive funding for the design through CMAC closeout funds, this is on an extremely This is on an extremely time-sensitive schedule in which the JPA needs to be executed, as well as our city match for the design only, which was the $25,650 plus the 30. That needs to be all signed and paid out prior to June 1st. And that's just a caveat of the MAG closeout funds.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I moved a resolution number 21-09, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona Department of Transportation for the Delaware Drive roadway improvement project be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Definitely write that check. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't have a council direction to staff. Selection of meeting dates and times and locations. Do I have a motion on the next meeting?
Your Honor? I moved that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Tuesday, June 1st, be held in the city council conference room located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction, Arizona, and other meetings to be scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. Call to the public, and I've got seven requests here. I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. At this time, is time for the public to express their requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed into city clerk prior to the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner, and I want to emphasize, no personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a discussion on issues and presented, but may respond to criticism, and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place the matter on future agenda for a council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And the first one I have here is for Lynn Lawson.
There'll be a little light that'll tell you, green, yellow, red.
Oh, great. Okay. Hi. Thanks for letting us come. I came, I've been in Apache now for approximately a year and a half. Came from Illinois, and I retired from the state of Illinois, worked with mentally ill for 35 years.
Did I have your address as well, please?
2605 South Tomahawk Road.
Thank you.
You can pull the mic down.
Oh, that's better. Okay, so what I, so because I worked with a mentally ill, I came here, and I felt like I was, this was where I needed to be. And I run into homeless, the homeless population everywhere, and at our church, and we're working with them. And what I learned is about 75% of them have a mental illness that is not being taken care of. And I then learned that AJ has criminalized the homeless population. Is that true? Since, it's been years now. And they, it was criminalized because of an anti-camping ordinance, and which makes homeless people who have no choice, there's no shelters in AJ, correct? There's no homeless shelters. So, a judge from the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals held that criminalizing sleeping in public when no shelter is available violates the Eighth Amendment, and it prohibits against cruel and unusual punishment. Homeless people should not be permanently branded as criminals simply by conducting ordinary human activity like sleeping, sitting, or placing things in the ground in public places. So, again, I'm new here. This is what I learned since I've been here. And I also read up that there was another city council that got rid of, or added a statement to their anti-camping ordinance, where they decriminalized homelessness, all by adding a line to it. And I don't know what the line is. I think it was Glendale. But I was wondering if we could do that, if the council could vote that we could decriminalize homelessness. That's one thing. And in 2017, the attorney wrote a letter to the mayor and the council members back then, asking the same thing. Is it time? It's time. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Smith?
Good evening. My name is Gary Smith, and I'm the director of missions for the Desert Chapel United Methodist Church, and really just have come here this evening to express our support for all the work that you do to take care of the homeless people of Apache Junction, and to let you know that we are ready to assist in any small way that we are able to do. We feed about 100 homeless people every Saturday, and we maintain a free clothing closet for them. And we would be very interested in doing more as the opportunities become available. I've really become aware recently that there are many churches in Apache Junction who are engaged in little efforts to help the homeless population. And I would really be very interested in finding ways for all of us to know more about each other and to support each other in our efforts. And so, I'm happy to be a part of it, and thank you very much.
What's your address, first?
My home address?
Yeah.
800 West Apache Trail. Permanent resident of Apache Junction, about three years. A winter resident for many years before that. It's very different when you're here year-round.
Yes. Thank you. Patrick Jensen?
I volunteer to help at the local church. It's a mission that my wife and I have taken on to assist his group. They feed 100, sometimes 125 people every Saturday. I'm there. I work the men's clothing department. We take, we take in people who bring clothes that don't fit anymore, or clothes that are not being used any further, it's donations to the church. And I'm real pleased with the way things have gone. Gary and his staff have done a great job of feeding the homeless, and we have tried to do a good job of getting the people something to wear, especially in the winter, when it's a little chillier here. We're not so big, and now that the temperature's into the 90s, but it's still, it's a great project, and we really like doing it and supporting the city and supporting the people who need help. Thank you.
Your address as well?
Yeah. 800 West Apache Trail, Apache Junction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Linda Jensen? I assume you have the same address?
Yes, I do. I want to thank all of you for listening to us today. I have been in Apache Junction now for 12 years, and I have seen the homeless. It's kind of hard not to. And so, I guess for me and my husband, we decided that we needed to help. Gary came to our church, the Desert Chapel, and started talking about what he was doing. And I know that was exactly what we were supposed to be doing. I am just very concerned now about our church, I feel, is really trying to help the homeless. And I think as far as the council and the city of Apache Junction needs to come up with a plan to help us. I know Lynn, being the psychiatrist, she really is very concerned about our mental health. And as me being in the trenches and talking to these people, they're just people, you know? They just need help. They really need, they need the food, they need the clothes, they need shelter, and they also need help in just talking and just being a human being. And I think when they come in there, they do feel like that, you know, that we talk to them, and I ask them their names and so forth. And to me, it's a joy that we are really helping them. But I wish that you, as the council, could help just a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Jeffrey? I think it's Leonard?
I believe in God, and He sees them there, because that's why I'm here. I, some of you don't know me, I bought the Greyhound facility for homeless veterans. And I've been fought from day one here with Rudy and Larry and them. I can't, my attorney can't even deal with them. All I've been told is lies from the start. I can't even give you an address now, because I don't have an address. Rudy won't give me an address. From the first moment I stepped foot in this council building, Rudy said, "You can't buy the property. No bank will loan you the money." That is a lie. I said, "I've got the money." Second, he said, "No insurance company will ever insure you." I said, "That's a lie. I've already got the insurance company." Then he said, "The people of Apache Junction, I don't, I don't think would want homeless veterans here." That's a lie. I don't believe that. Okay? They fought me, they red-tagged me, but the funny part is, they've got a red tag with this dear guy next door's address on it. So, on all my paperwork, on everything, it's got this residential property next door. And this dear guy lives in Idaho, and he sold me his property without him knowing about it. And now he's red-tagged without even knowing about it. We went over and cleaned the property up. I've spent almost $15,000 fixing the roofs. I've already got two properties just like this in Mesa. Mesa worked 100% with me. I can't give Mesa enough credit. I only had to get a permit because someone stole the one electric meter. And I had to put a new meter and got a permit, and they give me a permit. Matter of fact, I've got two veterans that they're paying for right now. And this is this guy that these people are speaking. I said, "I'm here." And anybody, even the Bible says, if anybody that closes their vows of compassion up and you see a brother in need, and you don't have compassion, how can the love of God be in you? I just want help. I just, I just want, leave me alone. Let me do my job. Let me turn these into nice buildings and help people. I don't want to argue or fight with nobody, but I would like to just get help. And I cannot, my attorney sent me an email. She said, "I cannot afford to go to college in Apache Junction to deal with them. Here's a list of 10 other things." And she's a good woman, helped me on two other properties. And there's no, I don't know what's going on. I feel like the movie Road House, but I'm not as pretty as Patrick Swayze. That's what I'm dealing with here. And I know there's good people in this town. I've seen good people in here. And all, I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this, I got one old man that's a six-month recipient from Vietnam was sleeping in his truck. He's been there about six months, and now he pays his little portion two or three weeks ahead of time. He didn't want to get him out. Most of these people are good people.
Thank you.
And I appreciate anything you can do.
Thank you.
Okay. Mo?
Ma'am, it's Mo. 234 North Apache Trail, Apache Junction, Arizona. Hear from those folks and help to try the veterans roadblock. Tired of seeing that disgusting. Please, look into it. Find the direction to help and support the people. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Schroder?
Save the best for last, did you? Okay. George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia Street, AJ. There's so many subjects. I watched last night. Mental health. It's a tragedy. Whatever money you're giving, 80,000, like, two years ago was 100,000. It's not even close. It's not even in the realm of being close to what we need to help our people. I tried to give the lady here who's been camping on the sidewalk right here across from Circle K for two years, I tried to give her 20 bucks. Would not take it. I left it on the, I left it on the pole. Still wouldn't take it. I don't know. Maybe she took it, maybe she didn't. I'm just trying to tell you. Mental illness, which I'm always being accused of. It's not right.
It's not right.
Okay. You talk about civil servant. What have I been doing for the last eight, nine years here? And 30 years before that, with biker gangs? I'm the one who got the damn last biker gang out of this city, okay? Not these guys, not you guys, me. The loser cannons, okay? I got them out. Whatever you're doing, we need money. We need serious money. And I'm sorry, but our two city managers, they're not helping in any possible way. Like a guy said, they're not trying. They don't want it that way. They like it the way it is. Why? I don't know, but they like it the way it is. We can get more money. It's up to these two to look in the right direction, not suck this city dry till we're dead, and they get to run their, whatever way they want their city to run, and you've got no choice but to approve of it. That's crazy. Doesn't help these people. Doesn't help me. Raquel, why isn't Mike Street being considered, okay? Emil's had the plans drawn up for four years. Where's Mike Street's at? Oh, maybe two, four years, maybe. That's ridiculous. You're not the only ones. You're not the only administration, not the only city council. You're failing as a whole. It's not anyone. You're failing. We got people living in people's backyards, and people know about it. Been there for three years, and they're helping support it. It's wrong. We have 4,000, approximately, people living in people's yards, and city code compliance won't do nothing about it. Nothing. They're not doing anything about it. I'm going to have a meeting with homeless security. We're going to find out who these people are, and they're going to be out of here. I don't care who they're related to. They're out of here.
Thank you. Counsel? Anyone wants to? Yes?
Brian, can we get an update on the better, I don't know which property you're talking about? Can we get an update on that one?
Yes, it's the property behind the dock track. We can give you that update.
Yeah, let's get in the middle of that and find out what's going on, please.
Okay, anything else? All right. I'll adjourn the meeting.